Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Schools District of the City of Dearborn Regular Meeting of the Board of Education, Monday, November 13th. It is 7:01 PM. I will call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Mozepp?
Here.
Trustee Pachlikoff? Trustee Watts? Here. President Thorpe?
Here. Next item?
Next item, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Shannon Peterson, Principal of Long Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I am standing here with three outstanding Road Runners from Long Elementary School. Ayana Herrera, 3rd grade, Brielle Robinson, 3rd grade, and Hamza Sala, 5th grade. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now they do the Long School Pledge. Thank you. Come through.
That "Yay for school" seemed forced, by the way. Ayana, thank you very much. Hamza, thank you. Brielle, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Have a good evening. Next item?
Next item, Superintendent's Update.
I am happy to have Dr. Maleko back. If you are not aware, he has been limited in his time with us the last couple of weeks due to a surgery that he had and an extended recovery that was not anticipated. I was intentionally trying not to communicate with him too much because I knew it was not too easy for him. So, welcome back. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate that, President Thorpe, and want to thank my team for covering, and I'm sorry for missing any events, including some of those events in Lansing, but do appreciate the great team we have. What I had done was something called septoplasty, and it's probably from an old hockey injury from a deviated septum. My surgery was on the 30th, and I know, Jim, I think you did see a picture. You could say I had a natural Halloween costume on the 31st. It looked like I got into a rough hockey game, so...
You didn't need to share the pictures.
You were one of the fortunate few. You're my boss. So, anyway, you know, with me, nothing's ever simple. It was supposed to be one week, and it turned into two just because I had some complications. Nothing that's going to impact my long-term health, but something that impacted, you know, additional healing time. Can't do anything. I'm on restricted duty, so I'm not 100%, but I am allowed to be here per my doctor. You know, I might be shorter with speaking. You might see me with lots of Kleenex. It's almost too, like, what the feeling is, is that I've had this awful cold that is just congested all in here. It's going to take a while to clear up. So, if my talking is a little different, that's all that's happening. It's nothing really to be concerned about. It's going to help me long-term, you know, for my lifestyle over, you know, in the next couple of decades. So, something that was important for me to get done. And I do let you know, just if I have to for some reason step out because of my nose, my nose wants me to step out, Mr. Wall will step in for my nose. So, thank you very much, President, and everyone, and the great team. Okay. I can go down the list?
Yeah, go for it.
All right. So, retirements. We have a few as we do every month. Michelle Dong, over 22 years of service. Jeff Murphy, over 23 years of service. Denise Orsette, over 13 years of service. And Charles Rogers, over 13 years of service. If we can thank them and congratulate them, I appreciate it. And I'm going to move down my agenda items. I'm going to call up Mr. Tom Wall and Mr. David Mustin, who are going to comment on the operational millage that we are due. It's on the agenda today for a renewal every 10 years per state law.
As our school funding is based upon Proposal A, that we are required to get our full levy to do an operational millage, and there's two parts of that. It's the 18 mills on non-homestead property and formerly 6.17 on homestead properties. That non-homestead is going to drop down to four mills. So, we have done this every 10 years, so we're in our third cycle. And with that, I'll let Dave kind of finish it off for you.
Thanks. Tom can handle the highly complex and technical part of school funding because that's far beyond my scope. My job here is just to make sure that we get the information out in a simple and easy way for everybody to understand and that it's accurate information. On tonight's agenda, the board will be deciding and voting on putting that ballot language on the February 27th ballot. That is the primary election here in Michigan, and so that would be the election date, February 27th, that this would appear. It is a operational millage, not a bond. This is not to build new schools. It's not to build additions onto schools. This is a big chunk, $41 million. 16% of our operational budget, $41 million of our operational budget. It pays the salaries. It buys the supplies. It pays the heating bills, the utility bills. All of those things that go into the day-to-day operation of the district is what the operational millage renewal is all about. As Mr. Wall said, we've approved this millage renewal in 2004 and in 2014, and here we are again in 2024 to renew this once again. So, the important things to take out of this, February 27th, $41 million, 16% of our budget, our operational budget, and a 2.17 millage reduction over what it was before. And actually, that number is actually lower than that, what we actually assess, but those are all those details that we will share later on. The important thing to remember is when you go to the ballot, rather than 6.17 mills, you're going to see four mills. So, it's a 2.17 mil reduction.
One quick question for you, and I think Trustee Barry had brought it up in a previous month. Is it going to be one primary or Democrat and Republican going to be two separate?
From everything that I've understood, I've been talking with the city clerk about this, and as of right now, one primary, three separate ballots in Michigan. This isn't a Dearborn, it's a Michigan law that the primary ballots, you go in and you request either a Democratic, a Democrat, Republican, or independent ballot, and cast your vote on one of those ballots. Our proposal will appear on all three of those ballots. This is a state election, so election law for state and federal elections are changing. Voting will start nine days prior to the election date. Absentee ballots will go out in mid-January. So, voting will actually begin in mid-January. You can vote in person nine days before at select sites that the city will set up during the day, and we will have all of that information that we will pass along as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, next, I just have a comment. I know we have, with the conflict in the Middle East, I put out several statements over the last month, and just again, my thoughts and prayers go to anyone who's lost a loved one or suffering a result of the conflict in the Middle East and will continue to support all of our students and our staff. I am now going to ask Masum and Danielle, Ms. Ali Badji and Ms. Elzayat to come up, and President Thorpe, we talked about this. I know Ms. Martin has been working with HR on just enhancing some security during conferences, because during conferences, you have a lot of outside people coming in, and so we just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on safety and security.
So, we're in ongoing collaboration with the union president, Kathy Martin, and she brought to our attention that several teachers had reached out to her feeling concerned, given the setup of our parent-teacher conferences and given world events that are occurring at this time. So, we brainstormed. The team got together. We brainstormed a bunch of different ideas, and so we're going to have, we canceled all building permits for external use, so the buildings won't be used for external building permits during parent-teacher conferences. At the elementary level, they're by appointment, so that's a lot easier to have the clerical staff at the front door and the support staff that isn't with a parent all the time to check, okay, who's your, to the parent, who's your appointment with, which teacher, what time, and then verifying by the list that the teachers provided, the people at the front office. And then at the secondary level, because it's not by appointment time, instead we have, I won't give the details because then there goes security, right? But we do have a plan in place to have close monitoring of, you have to check in when you walk in. And we have certain things will be, that the people in the front of the building that will be greeting everyone will be looking for when they walk in. We, Danielle Elzayat will speak to this as well, but she worked out having additional security guards and SROs present at as many buildings as we can. Obviously, we don't have 37 available, but she's worked out a plan for that, and she'll share it with you as well. And so, we put that out there, and the administrators are working with their building staff as well.
So, like Masum said, not to share, you know, too much publicly, but we will have coverage inside of the buildings with our security guard company, which is SecureTech, and then we'll have coverage outside of our buildings with our Dearborn Police Department in collaboration with, Sergeant Ashcroft is actually coordinating that for us with the police department. He's the person at the police department who oversees the SROs. So, might not be an SRO, might be an SRO. It will be a police officer, though, and they'll be making checks on the parameters of the buildings, especially for secondary. Any questions?
Trustee Watts?
This is connected to the, to what you were talking about in terms of security, and I know that a couple of weeks ago, that there was national news that was given to one of our school districts. Are we seeing anything in, in terms of threats, or are we increasing our, what are we doing to make sure that our students are feeling safe?
So, we did have something on social media that was a comment that we thought referred, you know, to our area. So, we did heighten security during that time. We actually, Chief Shaheen hosted a meeting last week. It was for school safety and police departments in the area or anybody who would be dealing with the Dearborn Police. We were invited to the meeting. So, the police department actually has a great plan in place for extra coverage all over the city, not only schools, right, but for like places of worship, for schools, for even the regular grocery store, and extra coverage from neighborhood police officers. And we met with them. So, these plans are already in place at the police department level, and then we're just enhancing a little of that in our schools and around our schools. And, you know, I know that we say this all the time, but like Dr. Maleko sent out a safety letter to parents in the community. So, safety is everyone's responsibility, right? So, it's the students. It's the staff. It's the parents who visit. It's the FedEx guy who delivers something, right? So, you know, we're a community school, and we'd like to look at the entire community of Dearborn schools, you know, as responsible for school safety. So, and that just falls back to what we've been taught by the state and the federal level, that if you see something, say something. And we offer several avenues for reporting in our district, which we actually do a really good job of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick thank you to the parents. We really appreciate their cooperation as well. Has COVID changed things as far as accessing the building? And since then, we really appreciate that the processes and the guidelines for visiting the buildings are adhered to, because like Danielle said, it's a team effort. So, we appreciate that.
Trustee McDonald?
Since we're on the subject, this might be a good time to give a refresher to people out there. You said that there's different avenues to put a, see something, say something. Cover a couple of those for us.
So, the state of Michigan has a reporting tool, which is called Okay to Say, and you can access their website from, I think it's okaytosay.gov. I believe that's the website. And actually, the schools have a great system, too, which is the school safe box, and every single school's website offers a link to the safe box, and whether it be a student, a staff member, a parent, it could be a neighbor who knows somebody in one of the schools, can actually click on that link, and then they can report the issue. And then there's a team on the district side that gets that email as an automatic notification, and we have an internal process of dealing with those notifications. So, we follow up with those.
And they're anonymous. They could be anonymous.
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
I'm going to back to the parent-teacher conferences. So, are all of the conferences in person, or do parents have the option to do Zoom?
They're all in person.
Okay. Is that something that with Zoom would be in the future?
So, we considered Zoom.
Okay.
And we did a hybrid during COVID, where it was some in person and some on Zoom, and we considered that as well. And we really are finally, it was a couple of things. It was a group discussion, like everything we do is highly collaborative. There was a couple of points why we decided not to go with Zoom. One, we don't know how well-equipped parents are to be able to hop on. We don't know if they have Chromebooks anymore. We don't know if they have the technology that they need. We also don't know if our classrooms are prepared the way they were before. Do all of them have cameras available? Because they haven't been zooming as often as we were in the past. And then also, a real big one for us was that we're finally getting back to the point where we're getting relationships that are face-to-face, and those relationships are so important to have that dialogue face-to-face when you can do so. And so, we opted not to go that route, but we did consider it.
Thank you very much.
So, moving along, on October 12th, we had a wonderful event called the Care to the Core. David Mustin and his team, Mike Assale, they did a great job. It was a live broadcast event that you could have went to. We have a few pictures that we're going to show right now through a slideshow, but it was just a wonderful day, and kudos to all the schools that participated across the district, bullying prevention, drug prevention, community partnerships, all sorts of positive things. And I hope he's got a picture of David's suit. You've got to see that one. It wasn't a one-minute message. If not, we'll request that from Eric, or maybe he can play that other message. That one at Salina was delivering to doorstep, positive notes in the community. I was there as well.
So, I was at the Salina one.
Yes.
And we delivered them, and the kids were just wonderful, so much so that I may have skipped a doctor appointment to stay with the kids, but that was really great.
And there were meaningful events going on all over the district. It was just a real positive day for everyone. All right. So, the next thing with my unexpected timeout, I was supposed to present at the Michigan Association of School Boards, and I know that President Thorpe was there, and Trustee Mozepp, and I'm always excited to present on our student voice, but I was not able to physically do it. So, President Thorpe was there with Dr. Sweden, and we had Thomas, Jenna, and one of our graduates, Tia, that were there. They did a great job, and I think this is, and I think Eric's going to play it. It's the first-ever one-minute message without me in it.
Hi. This is a special one-minute message from the Michigan Association of School Boards Meeting in Lansing, Michigan. We've been attending the annual leadership conference. I'm here with three of the students of the Student Advisory Council, who will introduce themselves and what we've been doing here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Thomas Bessick, and we gave a presentation to local school board members across the whole state of Michigan, and it's really nice to know that they are listening to us and picking up different things that we're doing in Dearborn, and they want to kind of implement it in their districts.
And it was really nice collecting the insights of our districts and what they're doing to promote our voice across the state.
Yeah, it's always really fun to showcase the great things that we're doing in our districts for other cities and to really show how strong Dearborn is.
And introduce yourselves.
Oh, and my name is Janet Afoma.
My name is Tia Barry.
So, the students did a great job with the presentation. In fact, they didn't even get a chance to get through all their slides because there were so many questions coming from the attendees. Trustee Mozepp also attended that session with us, but once again, the students made us proud. In fact, one of the attendees said, "I am so proud of you."
I think she wants you to.
I'm worried that it's too close. She mentioned how proud she was of the students before we even had a chance to say how proud we were of how they performed, but it was great being able to get there. I did have a beaten-up-old-students-first sign that we got in some of these pictures since you weren't there, so we took care of that for you.
Awesome. Thank you. I knew you'd step up. Now, you noticed Dr. Sweden was not in any of the pictures of one-minute message. She's camera shy, but that's okay. We have a surprise for her this Thursday coming up at the meeting, so we look forward to seeing her for that one. And there's over 350, I think Eric said, of one-minute messages now we've published, just positive little quick things the students like. So, thank you. And I would just reiterate what you said at the national conference in the summer, MASP. The students were just the talk and the highlight, the amount of questions. It's fantastic. And again, it's a way, thank you, President Thorpe, and students at Dearborn Shines, so... Okay. The last thing I have here is that David and I also attended a K-12 Alliance Legislative Day on October 25th. I have, I'm heavily engaged in all sorts of things going on in Lansing because of my role as the president of the Michigan Association of Superintendents. There were lots of legislation that was pending, that was up. David and I spoke to several legislators up there, including Senator Kamalary, who's not in our district, but he's the chair of the Education Committee. Representative Cole Azar spoke to me about evaluation law, and that is changing. We also met with our local reps, thanks to them, Representative Farhat, Senator Santana, Representative Whitsett, and we weren't able to meet with Representative Burns, but I did communicate with her because she was busy in committee meetings. But I will tell you that I'm going to continue to advocate for, you know, Dearborn students in my role there and all students in Michigan, and I think it's rewarding, and we can make a positive change. So, I appreciate the support of the board, and thank you to David for going with me, but we'll continue those networks going. And so, there will be some changes coming through the legislature, and you may have heard. Part of the reason they're adjourning is so that they can have that primary vote per law called Sinney.
Sinney Die.
Sinney Die. And what also happened was two of the Democrats were, won in a mayor election, so right now there's no majority, and so there's going to be a lot. They're going to have to run another special election, so you're probably not going to see a lot getting done up until May. But that's the world that we're kind of in as we're looking at different legislation. The evaluation changes did pass, and I know they're probably sitting at the governor's desk, but there's some significant changes we're going to have to adapt to with teacher and administrator, which includes that growth mark that's 40% that is now down to 20. And we were heavily involved, my association and I was, and I want to thank Representative Cole Azar, Senator Santana, because I had some concerns with some of the legislation and protecting students and reporting requirements, and they stepped up and came through for us. So, do want to say I appreciate that as well. And the last thing, next week, we don't have another meeting, but it's the holiday season, and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Just so everyone is aware, in previous years, Wednesday, the schools would be closed, but the district was open. Because of the way the new contracts are negotiated, the district is totally closed, shut down from Wednesday through Friday of next week. So, I hope everyone enjoys some turkey, some football, go Lions, and family time, right? And that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Maleko? Thank you very much. Next item?
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Commendations to the district groundsman, Tracy Akers, and Justin Miller. The two were stopped at a gas station when an accident occurred at the nearby stoplight. They immediately called 911 and ran to the scene to assist the vehicle's driver. They stayed with the driver, who was drifting in and out of consciousness, until the paramedics arrived. Their heroic actions demonstrated the district's core values. Commendations to the district's plumber, John and Dan. The Long Custodial Staff and Sub-Engineer, Mike Grisalak, for their effort to quickly resolve a water and sewage problem at Long Elementary. Commendations to engineer Sidney Costello for coming in on her vacation day to make sure everything was ready for the school the next day. Commendations to the following individuals for participating as school mascots during the Special Care to the Core kickoff event at the administration building. Ibrahim Abdullah, Salina Intermediate Wildcats. Caleb Kercedin, Etzel Ford Thunderbirds. Miranda Menzuski, Long Elementary Road Runner. David Higgins, Williams Ford Elementary Falcons.
Commendations to Nicole Aluard for being a recipient of this year's School Librarian of the Year Award by the Michigan Association of School Librarians. Ms. Aluard is a media specialist at Etzel Ford High School and the district's library media resource teacher. Commendations to Myla Harp and Dr. Daniel Patterson for assisting with the Dearborn Virtual K-12th Grade PSAT and NMSQT Testing Day. Commendations to SFE and the Fortin Food Service Team for making sack lunches and breakfasts for virtual K-12th Grade field trips. Congratulations to the Etzel Ford Varsity Soccer Team and coaches for winning their second consecutive district championship. Commendations to the Etzel Ford High School Accounting Department for organizing a college and career fair for the Dearborn community at large. The successful event provided an opportunity for both students and parents to gather important information about options for college and career paths. Commendations to Dearborn High engineer, Mike Low, for his quick actions to prevent the spread of a brush fire near Whitmore Bowls. A small fire had started in the field near the school when Mr. Low, who was driving by, stopped and immediately took action to move dry leaves and other debris away from the flames, preventing the fire from getting any larger. Emergency crews arrived, and the fire was extinguished. Mr. Low's selfless and quick actions prevented the fire from getting bigger and spreading where it could have caused damage to school property. Mike's actions not only protected the school, but also saw a wonderful example for all of us. Commendation to Dearborn High Cross Country and Track and Field Coach, Phil PJ Maher. Mr. Maher was inducted into the Michigan Interscholastic Track Coaches Association Hall of Fame on Saturday in recognition of a 41-year and counting coaching career.
Commendations to Mark Andrews and the Operational Department for all their hard work ensuring that the buildings under construction had everything they needed to be safe and functioning. Commendations to Matt Ozinski, Kyle West, Pete Avlee, Jeff White, and the Trades and Carpentry Department for all their hard work at Whitmore Bowls. The staff greatly appreciates their effort. Commendations to media specialist Sidney Alvaro for her outstanding work presenting at the MASL Conference in Ann Arbor. Ms. Alvaro shared information on the One School, One Book, and One Read to Them Project. One School, One Book is an integral part of Salina Elementary's commitment to literacy for students, and Ms. Alvaro's leadership has been instrumental in its success at Salina, gifting hundreds of students with the classical treasures.
Are you two done?
Yeah.
This mic got so loud. I think I saw your names at one point on the slide, but you two didn't introduce yourselves, so please let us know your names and what schools you attend.
My name's Ryan Ahassan. I'm a senior at Dearborn High School.
My name is Maryam Abdussader, and I'm a sophomore at Dearborn High School.
All right. Ryan, question for you. As a senior?
Yes.
What are you going to do next year?
Hopefully, business.
Where?
Hopefully Ross, Michigan.
University of Michigan, Ross School Business. Good. Good. Do either of you want to give any shout-outs to anyone at your school, any staff members, teachers, or support staff that have made a big difference in your school careers?
So, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Brielle, because especially with all the fights and behavioral problems at Dearborn High in these past couple of days and weeks even, she's been pushing through and... she's been pushing through and showcasing her true perseverance. And I think that's a really good characteristic for a principal to have. And especially since she did not come only two years ago, I believe. She's been just an amazing principal overall, and I really hope that she sees this and understands that.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I just want to comment with Ryan. I know with leading this Amity Club, you're doing a great job, and you came to our ministry, so looking forward. You're very welcome. I also want to make a commendation to our Student Advisory Council. This was another event I missed because of the procedure I had. But students went up to Lansing to advocate for it was anti-vaping, thank you. Anti-vaping, vaping prevention with the legislature, and I know it was led by Dr. Sweden and Ms. Faye Neemer. And so I just wanted commendations to all those students, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to go, but I would have been there and thank them for what they're doing to promote positive in the state.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of
Acknowledgement of donations.
I'm sorry, donations. Acknowledgements of donations.
A donation of $585 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a reading corner. Donation of $138 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a calming corner. A donation of $322 has been offered to Bryant, Lori, Salina Intermediate, Smith, Stout, Eunice, and Woodworth Middle Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for trophies and ribbons. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for microscopes. A donation of $2,530 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation through donations at the Green Tie Dinner to be used for the Etzel Ford Courtyard. A donation of $20,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with the Ford Fund to be used for robotics. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Dearborn Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with GLP to be used for Sports World, Inc. A donation of art supplies has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Blick Art Materials to be used in the art room. A donation of 30 boxes of disinfectant wipes has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Ishmael Bashir to be distributed to each classroom. A donation of 160 pumpkins has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Papaya Wholesale to be used during their Care to the Core event, and I think we saw some of those pumpkins on those pictures. A donation of 100 pumpkins has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Dearborn Fresh Supermarket to be used during the Care to Core event. A donation of pressure washing services has been offered to Smith Middle School by Full Blast H2O to be used to clean the exterior brick of the building. A donation of $550 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Fortson Rusty Tractors to be split between PBIS and the Academy of Fortson.
That's all.
Thank you very much. As usual, the Dearborn Education Foundation steps up to support our students throughout the district. One of the items that was mentioned here was for the Etzel Ford Courtyard Project. That was one they worked on at their annual Green Tie Event earlier this year. And also a thank you to everyone else that donated to the schools. That was an awful lot of pumpkins the students had over at Miller got a chance to decorate for the holiday. Next item.
And now approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance Committee meeting, October 9th, 2023, Board Report 23-55. Regular P-12 meeting, October 9th, 2023, Board Report 23-56. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes. Support.
Motion by trustee Dambrosio, supported by trustee Mosip. Are there any additional corrections or any corrections, I'm sorry, that are needed in the minutes? Hearing none. May I attach unanimous rule? So be it. Thank you very much. Next item.
Special reports, elementary special scheduling, Mr. Adam Martin, Ms. Batme Faraj, and Ms. Lemmy Sur.
And just to intro, this was part of two different board requests, so.
We'll try to do this as quick as possible. Mr. Wall over there asked me how long I was going to be, and I said about 45 minutes, and he looked at me crazily. I will not be that long, but trying to explain scheduling, 45 minutes doesn't even give it justice. It's a really complex thing. So I'm going to try to do my best to talk it through and then open it up for questions, because your questions are probably going to lead to more answers than the presentation can get us. So I started with the first slide here, and it's kind of a tongue-in-cheek slide about how many two dozen or two egg omelets can you get from a dozen eggs versus if you have a two-and-a-half egg omelet? And the last question there is, which one's more efficient? Sorry, I'll slow down.
I wonder how they're going to translate.
Yeah. So the which one is more efficient is a little bit of a loaded question, right? It's depending on what you're trying to accomplish. I think we all would agree if you want to maximize a dozen eggs, right? The two-egg omelets make most sense. You can get six of those omelets out of it. If you're going to use the two-and-a-half, you have four, and you'd have two left over. So in scheduling, really, you're trying to maximize the resources that you have available. So what I'm going to do is look at the contract language and implications from the contract language for elementary scheduling last year versus this year. And I want to preface this by saying the elementary block schedule and this design kind of went hand-in-hand with early release and some other contract negotiation pieces that were happening from March to April to May to June to July, and as you guys know, was ratified late in August. Certainly, the time crunch put some constraints, some added constraints on decisions. But certainly want to recognize that everybody, a lot of the specials teachers and building administrators and teachers did a fantastic job kind of reacting to the change and going with it. So in terms of why the change, and I'm not going to read through all of these, but there are three that I want to highlight specifically. Create collaborative opportunities for teachers within the school day. Allowing teachers to spend time with like teachers by grade level, so that way they can have discussions about, hey, what is working well? What isn't working well? How do we move kids forward? The next one, reducing travel time from building to building. Anytime we have a teacher that is moving from building to building during the day, we lose about half of a class period, 20 to 25 minutes is what we allot them to move. So it's inefficient just based on that piece, right? Instead of them being in front of students, they're traveling, and that travel does come at a cost. And then providing whole prep periods for specials area teachers is another one. Masum with HR got more feedback than I necessarily got, but our special area teachers in the former model didn't get full preps. They were split up as they were trying to maximize, and some of that was due to lost time for travel. So scheduling 101, and I kind of put a picture there of what a schedule could look like. That's not a real schedule, but you'll get an idea of what it looks like. It's pretty complicated. And as you start changing things, it has a domino or a cascading effect to what it is. The more constraints or variables you have to begin, so is it two eggs or two-and-a-half eggs? The harder it is to standardize it or build a master schedule. It just is. Number five, master schedules can accomplish a vision if that's what you build toward. So if you have a focus of, hey, this is what I'm trying to accomplish, you can accomplish that through the master schedule. But you have to have that design in mind as you're building that master schedule. And then the last one there, the number of students and staff is ultimately the deciding factor of what you can go with or what your schedule is. So what I did is I put together kind of the reality of classroom teachers by building, so you guys can get a feel for the variance that we have across the district. We have 22 elementaries, and there's really four different sizes of elementaries, which means that our elementaries have to share with each other inevitably. So how do you do that in a way that provides or maximizes the resource? And that's really what we were trying to work toward. How do we maximize the resource to accomplish a common vision? And what has to change in order for us to get there? So the previous year contract language, and I put a picture on the right there. I think the table says it best. As you can see, kindergarten, kindergartners had two PE, two music, one art, one enrichment. First grade, I think you guys can kind of see what that is. One PE, two music, one art, a media, and an enrichment. And then fourth and fifth graders, there were three different options that were up to building administrator in terms of what those options were. As you can tell from there, there's a lot of variability just in the language in terms of how and what specials elementary students provide, got, or received. At the bottom there, I kind of looked at the mode. I put average, but it should really be mode of the number that was most often or kind of there. You know, most buildings had one enrichment. We kind of have half of a media there because first, second, and third grade, which is half of our six grades, had media. Art was pretty consistent with one art. Music, there were mostly kids were getting two musics, and then PE, it was kind of split, like one and a half. Three grades had it one time, three other grades had it two times. One thing that I also want to point out is on the left-hand side, classroom teachers' planning periods in the former contract were 45 minutes, where special area teachers were only 40, so it wasn't equal there. There were also six planning periods spread across five days. So again, five days with six planning periods is another constraint added into the pot that made scheduling or a master schedule building really difficult at the elementary level. And then there really wasn't one standard offering across all K-5 grades, if you look at the chart there. I would say music and enrichment is the closest, but there was variability there. So just wanted to give you a glimpse of what that looked like. So the impact of that contract language, so it's in the contract. What does that look like in practice? Again, I won't read through everything, but a couple of the biggies. Specials teachers had to travel between buildings, resulting in a loss of instructional time, which I mentioned before. Specials area teachers had interrupted prep time. Again, I mentioned that before. Common prep times or that collaborative time for grade-level teachers was really difficult for building administrators to schedule in because they had specials teachers kind of sliding in and sliding out throughout the day, and they were building their schedule around that. The last one, inconsistency from day to day in terms of when the specials were being offered. Sometimes in the morning, sometimes in the afternoon, sometimes twice in one day because they had six specials. So from an elementary perspective, and I would even say this cascades up to middle school and high school, consistency is really important. Time of the day when you're going to have a special, time of the day when there's lunch and other things. So absolutely impacted kind of the day-to-day and the flow of a building. Current year contract language, so as you can see, and one thing that we wanted to do was look at the total FTEs. So the total teachers that we were using last year as we kind of moved into this year. That was something that Dr. Maleko and all of us wanted to accomplish. We weren't trying to lay off teachers. We were trying to say, how many teachers do we have, and how could we use those in a different way? So by designing it this way, we were able to use pretty much, I mean, you'll see, there's a little bit of a variance, but we were trying to build from, if I have a dozen eggs, right, how do I build to maximize those dozen eggs, using that analogy? So one planning period is 45 minutes for all teachers. Remember before, specials area teachers only got 40. This is 45. There were five planning periods spread across five days for six levels, six grade levels. Again, standardizing it, making it easier for the math to work. And then standard offerings for students across the elementary that included art, music, PE. We also have enrichment and media. So as you look at those offerings, it's much more standardized than the chart before. In terms of the impact of this contract language, and again, I'm not going to read through everything. The big wins for us were ensured 45 minutes of prep time every day for every teacher, provided structure to allow common preps for all teachers, so that's by grade level and by special area. Reduced the sharing of staff down to two to three buildings at most. That was something I didn't mention in the previous slide, but there were buildings that were sharing specials teachers with multiple buildings. So anytime there was an added classroom in one building, it rippled to three, four, five, six, sometimes seven buildings. Also providing consistency for students and for teachers in terms of the time during the day that they would have the special and instruction occurring. There were some negatives. Resulted in teachers who had homeschools getting relocated to new buildings. Our resource teachers did a fantastic job of trying to honor, hey, what is your home building? Let me make sure that you're there at least some of the time. Some buildings had multiple teachers teaching the same subject. We did have a few as we married buildings together to make them whole in terms of how the specials teachers were allocated or assigned. There were some buildings that shared with multiple buildings, but that was not the norm. That was the that was just a unique situation based on, again, how many classroom teachers those buildings had. So in looking at the side-by-side comparison, hopefully you can see there's a little bit of a difference between the 22-23 variance and the 23-24 standardization. Again, the goal was to accomplish common preps, reduce travel time, ensuring that students had consistent offerings, and to try to maximize the resources best we could. So I know there was a question about, hey, how did this all impact overall FTEs? So this is the overall FTE cost for the district in terms of total FTEs. And this was provided by the different resource teachers. As you can see, there was a .3 increase overall. The biggest jump was from enrichment, going from 12.8 to 15.9. STEAM is something that we supported and wanted to support, so we made a decision, hey, STEAM needs to be offered in all schools, and that's why we saw an increase there. PE and art saw a small decrease. Music and media is right exactly where they were. So in that original slide or the slide here at the bottom, you know, when you're talking about how did the offerings previously impact FTEs currently, there was not a major reduction in any one area or a major increase in any one area. Last one, next steps and feedback. I would just say, you know, trying to ensure student consistency with staff in buildings, that's something that we still want to work toward. Determining how to best utilize the space constraints, so we did have some specials teachers that were in buildings with other specials teachers that they weren't before, so buildings have had to work through that. As you guys know, some of our buildings, in terms of space and utilization, are pretty full, so that was a piece. The big question is, what do we do with the fifth special? This year, because we wanted to ensure jobs, we split the fifth special amongst media and music. So instead of first through third graders getting media, what is happening this year is all K through five will get media for a full semester, and then our media specialists will move to another building. And you'll see some of the feedback from the media specialists. They love seeing all of our students. They have some concerns about not being in their building full year, which I totally understand. And then the opposite of media is a second music. Students are getting a second music. Again, if you looked at the numbers before, most of our students were getting two musics anyway, so we used those existing FTEs to create the structure. In a vacuum, if we were designing from no FTEs and no anything and just able to make five decisions on what those specials were, a lot of the change and a lot of the nuance wouldn't happen, but we understand what it is. With change, there is some, there is some difficulty, right? It's different. We want to continue to create the ability to have common preps. Our goal is, you know, semester ends at the end of the calendar year, so hopefully early February to bring everybody back together and start having some conversations about what next year looks like, what changes we might want to look for or bring forth here to make a recommendation. I would say some of the feedback that we got, did meet with all the resource teachers, and did ask them a question, do we and did ask them a question. Do we want to keep it as is, or do we want to go back to how it was? All of them were no, let's keep on with the path that we're on. Even though it's not perfect, we've set our way and let's follow it through. Music just recently has developed a schedule to allow for instrumental as well as staff consistency. I already spoke about media. They love seeing K through five, but they have some concerns about not being in their buildings year-round. PE would like to be offered to more students. They obviously see that as a need for students. STEAM likes autonomy of not being departmental, but they also like having a set time and set structure for them, and art is really happy with this structure. They're pretty content with it as well. Outside of that, I don't have anything else.
Any- Questions for Mr. Martin, trustee Moser?
So did some teachers switch the subject that they were teaching because of the structural change?
No. No, they may have switched the building they were in or may have switched the grade level that they were teaching before, but in terms of switching from like media to PE to art to STEAM, no.
Okay.
And with STEAM, STEAM or enrichment, last year, we kind of asked or requested that everybody offer it. There were still some variance in terms of what that was looking like. So to answer your question, simply no.
And then I see that we did lose on PE.
Yep.
And that's a concern that many parents have. We all recognize how important students should be active in school.
Sure.
Especially at the elementary. So what are other avenues where students can participate in PE even after school, or is there any offering clubs, walking clubs, certain things like that at the elementary level?
So I would like to say elementary students are getting, and it's different, right? Fifteen-minute a recess in the morning, fifteen in the afternoon, and then a recess at lunchtime. But yes, the PE concern is valid.
Yeah, and you know, every school decides what they want to offer or what they kind of offer.
Sure.
But there aren't any sports in elementary, so that's probably a limitation.
And that PE, or excuse me, the recess was something we added in the 2018 contract, so it was absolute, so that they are getting that extra time.
And that's unstructured, twice a day.
And extended lunch.
And extended lunch, that's true.
One additional thing I would bring up is something we did a few years ago where we started trying to integrate what was going on in the specials with core subjects. Like maybe in art class, they're learning geometric shapes, things like that. Is that still something that we're trying to do and integrate?
Yes, and with the PLC designed the way it is now with early release, special area teachers are available to meet with grade-level teachers to sync what they're doing and to complement one another. So yeah, whenever possible.
So does that mean that if a teacher says that my class is having a hard time with, name it, maybe the special teachers in what they're teaching can also try to accentuate it?
Absolutely. Now, that's building specific too, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not something you can require, but you encourage, and it's happening in schools. I can't say it's happening in every school, but the design of early release is to structure that to happening district-wide. That's the goal, one of the goals.
Thanks. Trustee Watts?
So I think somebody had mentioned, I think trustee Moser, about the clubs. I do remember a few years ago at Lindbergh that in the springtime, they did offer a track club, but I don't know who was the sponsor. I don't know if it was teacher-led or what it was, but there was something there.
They're usually teacher-led, and I forgot to mention what Mr. Rumel is doing or the ride-your-bike-to-school and the walk, and there's also that too. So there are district initiatives, but then there's also building-specific initiatives.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.